Education meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Serone?
Here.
Dr. Martin?
Here.
Dr. Mario?
Here.
Dr. Pollock?
Here.
Ms. Robinson?
Here.
Ms. C?
Here.
Ms. Wenmuth?
Present.
Okay, let's stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh! Wait, no, no, I didn't. All right. I'm still relatively new at this role here. All right. So we're going to agenda item 4.1, approval of building administrator contracts. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the building administrator contracts as discussed and presented.
Second.
Dr. Pollock?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Wenmuth?
Aye.
Dr. Mario?
Aye.
Ms. C?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
With that, I want to congratulate and invite Dr. Mitchell to present one of our new assistant principals.
Good evening, Board President Serone, Vice President Dr. Martin, members of the Board of Education, and Superintendent Dr. Kilgotti. This is the recommended candidate for our fed AP at Southbury and Wolf's Crossing. Christina Lewis is the recommended candidate for the split role with 15 years of administrative experience, including roles as principal and assistant principal. She brings extensive expertise in special education, MTSS, school improvement, and serving as LEA and IEP meetings. Christina holds a Director of Special Education endorsement, LBS certification, and all required administrative and teaching credentials. Please join me in welcoming Christina Lewis.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell.
All right. Agenda item 5.1, public comment. Do we have any public comments today?
Yes, we have four.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the public for attending tonight's meeting. We value the feedback we receive from our members of the public and encourage everyone to take an active interest in their public school system. Individuals interested in speaking to the board this evening are asked to have completed a comment card and presented it to the secretary to the board. When the secretary calls your name, I ask that you come to the microphone, state your name for the public record, and provide your feedback. Please note that comments are limited to five minutes per person. The board does not participate in discussion during public comment. Comments should address the Board of Education as a whole and not be directed to an individual board member, audience, or staff member. Follow-up on your questions or concerns may be addressed by administration through the contact information provided on the comment card. Thank you.
Mr. Prasanna?
So we ask that you come to the table here. Take the mic so the public can hear you.
Good evening, everyone. So my name is Prasanna Kumar. I'm coming from Wolf's Crossing Community, which is a brand-new one. So I have a concern which is being raised from my community before almost 60 students, which we have up to middle school-going kids. So we have put forth our concern with the transport which has not been available to us from the calendar year. So we shared our recommendations and we shared our concerns with respect to the bridge, which has been newly constructed. I'm a new to Illinois. I came from Pennsylvania. So when I bought this house, I've been told like, hey, you'll be getting a bridge, and you'll also have an intersection, you'll be getting a school transport irrespective of the bridge which has been constructed. So I was with the hope of getting like transportation because I go to, I commute to my office. My wife is a homemaker with another kid. So with all that said, we shared our recommendations and we shared our concerns, but we came to know that this fall under safety guidelines from the city and city of Aurora. But there is no transparency of what has been assessed on what grounds it's been eliminated on the free transport. So we want to know, and we kindly urge and request that if the city and the school district can do a real revaluation along with the principal, and let us know what are the safety factors which we are missing because we think there are various safety concerns like the bridge, the height, the safety rails which is not meeting according to our standards. But we are not the experts as you and the concerned team might be letting us know. And it's also new construction, lot of construction vehicles going on. There are no speed bumps, there are no safety guardrails near the bridge. It's a high bridge. So there are a lot of concerns. So that's our kind request. So we would like the respective team to let us know what we are missing because we, as new residents in this community, almost 162 single-family homes, we feel that our kids may not be safe, especially during winter. And it might have a psychological trauma for us to make sure our kids are safely crossing the bridge. And we might not be knowing like what dangers and concerns because there are also wildlife, like coyotes and other things, and there's a cornfield which the kids need to cross. So there are various concerns and factors which we have given. So that's our concern, and we would kindly urge the team to let us know how you can try to help us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, it's one way of communication in this instance, so. Sir.
Katie Hyman?
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you again. I just wanted to touch base on your agenda item tonight. I know you'll be voting on the future development with the partnership with the village and SD 308. I would really like it for you to put it on your to-do list to make sure that our SD 308 students are taking part in building that development. We've talked about it for years now about strengthening our CTE classes and students. You could have Oswego East students bused to OHS. OHS could literally walk across the street to the development. It's a stone's throw away. So I'm just asking you for the future of our trades department, for the future of our students, if you could create some kind of relationship with the village and yourselves and Cortigan and Clark and JTE to put it in the amendment somewhere. There's got to be a way to create some kind of internships or apprenticeships for SD 308 for a direct path with the college and career readiness that you guys are talking about. So I just, I ask if you could please put that on an agenda item for a future meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Prasanna Kumar? It was just filled out twice, so I didn't know if... Okay.
Oh, okay.
Michael Reynolds?
Hello, my name is Michael Reynolds. I'm here tonight about your guys' proposal and what you guys plan on doing with the Traumber Junior High, the old Traumber. Because I'm probably the most greatly affected in this room by what you guys are about to do because I live directly next door to my property. Boundary is directly up to my driveway and directly up to my garage in the back. And I'm gonna have a lot of construction traffic over the next two to three years. I'm gonna be constantly cleaning up the mess. My grandmother's elderly, she lives on the same street. Most of my neighbors are elderly. They couldn't make it to this. But there's gonna be a lot of changes for us, apparently. We're talking about 250 or so minimal residents, maybe 500. That's gonna directly impact my street, which is sometimes a racetrack because Oswego Police doesn't do a good job patrolling it. And as you guys know, on Washington Street as well, that gets really bad. The corner's highly congested, it's hard to get in and out of as it is. And we've seen the impact with 71 in Washington. And now they're gonna put Dunkin' Donuts over there and a bunch of other stuff. There's rumors they're gonna put retail all the way down 71 behind my property, which is, you know, gonna directly impact me as well with the noise. I already hear the dumpsters at 4 o'clock in the morning when I'm going to work. I'm gonna have cars coming in and out all day and night, not just myself, but the entire neighborhood. As you guys know, we're in old Oswego. I'm one of the oldest houses downtown. My house was built in the 1890s. The farmer that used to own it used to hold a church off my front porch, off the top of it, and hold classes there as well when the school had problems. So I am gonna be greatly affected by this. It's gonna affect my property value because I think all those rentals are gonna hurt my property when you look out the backyard and all you see is a big building and 250, 300 cars, kids out there making a lot of noise, teenagers, whatnot. I'm concerned that some of it, if they can't fill it like they haven't been able to fill all the residential properties in the area, is it gonna become Section 8? And what's that gonna do to my property value? Because we've seen what's happened to Boulder Hill. Nothing against Section 8. My wife and I are both a product of it. We grew up on the side of Aurora. It's just renters don't take as much pride in the property as myself as a homeowner because every day I get up at 4:00 in the morning to go to work. When I get home, I go outside, I work on my house every day. And as you guys go by and see, I've taken an old dilapidated farmhouse and turned it into what it is now. A lot of pride, a lot of hard work. And now I'm worried that all that's just gonna go to waste. A lot of concerns, not just myself, but the whole entire neighborhood as a whole. The infrastructure can't handle it. Is our water pressure gonna keep up with it? Because my water pressure ain't that great. And I just had to have my sewer cleaned out. My grandma, same. It's real hard watered on there. I just installed a water softener. How's all this gonna impact, you know, the local community? And what's all these new housing, this big apartment complex, gonna do with all these old nice houses? I mean, are we gonna look like the east side of Aurora pretty soon? Lot of concerns. I'm just coming the voice, and hopefully you guys hear some of it. And maybe you can keep us all updated and keep us in your thoughts when you guys make these decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Section 6.
Good evening, Board. Hard to believe that the school year is coming up so fast and quick. Some of us are already dusting off our school supplies list, for those of us who have children in the district. I wanted to touch on a couple of things this evening. First, want to highlight some good news and invite Dr. Mitchell, our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, to give the Board a quick update on some of our highlights around our staffing because we want to make sure that our students have somebody to receive them. And so our team has been working very hard, our principals, our administrators, our directors, to get ready for the school year. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Dr. Kilgotti. So as Dr. Kilgotti alluded to, the district and HR has been working diligently to fill all of our vacancies for the upcoming school year. So I just want to give you some comparative information so that we can celebrate the progress that has been made. So last time this year, we had six building openings. This year, at this time, we have zero. So we have filled all of our building openings. This year, last time, we had seven elementary openings. Right now, we have four. We had 6.5 junior high openings. Right now, we have two. We had 25 related services opening. Right now, we are at 19. Last year, this time, we had 66 teacher assistant openings, and we are at 14 right now. Huge celebration. And last but not least, this time last year, we had 12 maintenance custodial positions open, and right now, we have five. So the HR team and our building leaders are working very hard to fulfill all of our positions and make sure we're ready to accept students on the first day of school. Thank you, Dr. Kilgotti.
That's really cool.
Well, I appreciate all the hard work, you know, in getting those positions filled and the continued hard work. But this was kind of intentional.
Very intentional.
You know, this was, we, you know, took these steps with our contracts to make it a more appealing place to work. We definitely care about all of our employees, want this to be a great culture, continuous improvement. And, you know, it's intentional. So it's great to see the fruits of that, and our students will definitely benefit from it, so.
Thank you.
And that was the first time I heard that, so.
I want to invite Mr. Queen to talk about the project as part of my report, just an update on the HVAC system, the air conditioning system at Traumber. We want to get ready that our system, our students with that heat outside, I know we're all thinking about some cooler temperatures in classrooms, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Kilgotti. For those of you at home or those of you just tuning in right now, beginning of May last year, towards the end of the school year, we lost one of our major units, an RTU unit that supports approximately 35 to 40 classrooms in other areas in the building. We researched with our architects, our vendors, any resource that we had available to us. And we came to you with Train, who proposed the best idea, best plan moving forward. We called an emergency board meeting where we all met in here real early in the morning on a Monday and discussed that a little bit. I'm happy to update you that I have spoken with Train just recently. The unit is scheduled to ship on 8/14. It has, so once that unit arrives, it'll take about a day to get here. They're gonna send it through express. So once it arrives Friday afternoon, Train is going to jump right on the ball and get going. When we're doing this, we're talking about lifting thousands and thousands of pounds up in a year. So we're gonna do this process over the weekend, gaming towards Sunday. So that process is picking up, growing great. Train has really proven through. Just to give you a little bit of contingency, Train is also going to AC this building for us during that set and the duration of the project. So what that looks like for us is they're gonna take some temporary units, set them outside, duck up over to the roof, and come in and force air out. These are going to be comparable to the temperatures that we would have with this new unit. So that contingency is rock solid for us, and we need that because we want these kids to start the school year fresh, cool, and safe. Okay? That's it.
Thank you. If you wanted to know how live we were, we are live, so thank you. I'm thinking there's a YouTube video with you out there showing this process. So thank you to your team. Thank you to your team for bringing us the details and really getting us ready and having that contingency plan. Speaking of contingency plans, we have, our transportation department is hard at work at finalizing its plans for the school year. This has included some deep analysis that the Board approved regarding a hazardous study review. Every decision that we pursued was done with a lot of due diligence and ensuring that all our areas were safe for safe passage for our students. We recognize that wherever there may be some unanswered questions or people still wondering, our team will be working, our school team under Dr. Waller and Dr. Campbell are working with their team to reach out to families to ensure that any questions that still remain about safety and safe passage are addressed. Our back-to-school website is live, so we want to invite you all in our community. Check out our website. There you can access information about registration, school supply list, requests required for, also required immunizations, and more. Old Traumber, you have heard a lot on our last board meeting. The Board approved bringing this evening this opportunity to really initialize a formal agreement to really start to think about what does this transfer look like? What does a sale of this property look like? Tonight is not a vote to sell the property. I just wanted, it's really to initiate a formal partnership with the village. And the resolution you will hear is just that. There is no final decision. What we recognize, though, is that this property is one that, over the last many, many years, has been a significant, has had significant impact on our district from a financial perspective. And we are also recognizing that we need to ensure that we are doing full, we are taking formal steps to really ensure that there's due diligence around this whole process. We have two attorneys actually really committed to supporting this work, and I want to thank the Board for its direction and guidance throughout this process. All of our questions, or any questions that come up throughout this journey, will be, would invite you to visit our Clarity Corner, which is on our district website, where a lot of times we'll have a lot of questions that come up that are sent into the community, from the community or from the Board. Nothing is more important to us than to ensure that we are doing this with transparency and putting our students and their needs first, given our fiscal responsibilities. And so that is a high priority for us. And with that, I want to invite the Board to join in sharing, because there are so many important things happening in our district, we share in this responsibility. I would thank the Board members for sharing some of the good news. Ms. Robinson?
Thank you, Dr. Kilgotti. With that, three students from Oswego High School have achieved a high level of success at the national level. Congratulations to the following individuals for their performance at Skills USA Championships. Aiden Emanuel, 15th place in restaurant service. Jack Walcott, 7th place in cabinet making. And Caitlin Filk, I apologize if I said that incorrectly, 3rd place in baking and pastry arts. Congratulations.
This is for Braden Thompson of OHS participating in the Cuban World Championships in Seattle, where he placed 12th in the 3x3 blindfold category. In fact, you may have seen the incredible video of him in action on our district's social media page. Congratulations on the impressive accomplishment, Braden.
We may invite him for demonstration. It's pretty remarkable.
It is a cool video.
Yeah.
Obviously, deal with pressure.
Yes.
Doing that in front of, at a world championship.
Many of our elementary students have gotten to engage in maker space sessions throughout the summer months, whether programming Ozimbots, constructing with blocks, or doing anything in between. These have been great opportunities for our students to exercise their imagination and learn many new skills.
Yeah. Even in the summer months, our staff is dedicated to serving our students. Shout out to the SD 308 staff members who recently attended the avid Summer Health Institute in Chicago. We know the skills you learn from this event will make such a difference in our students' lives this year and beyond.
From now through Thursday, July 31st, all are invited to contribute to the Start Strong School Supply Drive organized by Chick-fil-A and Community Cares. Chick-fil-A Oswego is collecting 12-count colored pencils, 3x3 Post-it notes, three-pronged, two-pocket plastic folders, and glue sticks. All supplies will support SD 308 students in need, and donors will receive an offer card good for a free chicken sandwich or 8-count chicken nuggets from Chick-fil-A.
Free chicken.
Free chicken, I know.
But we were just talking about it a little earlier.
We have two teen boys at home, they love free chicken.
Yeah. And it was weird that it was, you know, on the sheet here to call out. All community members are encouraged to attend one of three upcoming committee or community budget meetings hosted by the SD 308 Finance Department. These meetings will be an opportunity to learn more about the district's financial decisions for fiscal year 2026 and how they align with the strategic plan. These sessions will take place as follows. Tuesday, August 5th, from 4:00 to 5:30 at Homestead Elementary School. Wednesday, August 6th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at Lakewood Creek Elementary School. And Thursday, August 7th, from noon to 1:30 virtually.
Spread the word, SD 308 is hiring. We are looking for special education teacher assistants, nurses, bus drivers, bus monitors, mechanics, crossing guards, occupational therapists, and more to join the team. To learn more about our district's available positions, please visit the SD 308 website.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Serone, and Board members. Back to you.
All right. Moving on to item 7, consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I make a motion to approve all items under consent, including 7.1, minutes from the Board of Education meeting on July 7th, 2025, open and closed sessions. 7.2 to acknowledge the FOIA requests received by the district. 7.3 to approve a resolution authorizing the grant of permanent easement and temporary construction easement to the DuPage Water Commission for its water link project. 7.4 to acknowledge and approve the acceptance of the Boundless Educators Initiative Grant Award received by the district in the amount of $75,000.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just had one comment. Earlier, we heard some numbers about Human Resources and how we have made some great progress in making sure that we have a fully-staffed schools for the upcoming school year. And 7.4, this grant award is going to help us continue those efforts in regards to our teacher residency. So I was really happy to see that on there because I think it's a really important program that can really help us great educators that are gonna stay in Oswego. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
And we appreciate the grant. Any other discussion?
Ms. C?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Dr. Pollock?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Wenmuth?
Aye.
Dr. Mario?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Moving to the item 8 for information, financial information.
Okay. Mr. Obafemi?
I've shared the financial information for the district for the month of May. As you can see there, we're on track as to what we expect at this time of the month. Now, we're getting close to, so the, I will bring the June financial to the Board in August, the second part of August. At that time, we will have started an audit of the financial for fiscal year '25. And what will happen is there'll be a number of footage adjustment. But as it stands right now, we're on track. Revenue is actually better, slightly better than what we projected. And expenses are right on track, so there are no surprises. Anyway, so one thing I would like to, and as far as the fund balance, May from February till May is the low point of the district financially. We've gotten some more money in June. We've gotten the first installment of the tax receipt in June. But of course, that will be in the next month. It will show up in the fund balance in when we present the June financial at the February 20, August 28th Board meeting. One thing I would like to point out is the CPI report for May. And so in May, the CPI actually went down from 0.2 to 0.1, 10 basis points. So 12 months, month over month, for 12 months, we are sitting at 2.4 million, at 2.4%. I'm sorry. Thinking about money too much. 2.4% over 12 months. And that is significant because, as we all know, the majority of the revenue that the district gets to run the district comes from property taxes. So we kind of monitor that and keep that in mind. But otherwise, the financial for May is on track. There's nothing out of your net.
You know, I didn't ask this, but I know you know the answer. In our projections, we expect like 2.1 for inflation, is that, remember?
For this year or for?
Just in general.
So I'm assuming you're talking about for the 2025 levy. For 2025 levy, we actually assume 1.5. We're very conservative.
Okay.
But the way things are looking right now, more likely than not, it'll come in much higher than 1.5.
June was 2.7, right?
Yes. But the CPI that really, really impacts us when it comes to levy
is December.
is the December 2025 CPI that will come out in January of '26. So we try to be conservative when it comes to revenue. That way, we don't spend money, we don't.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, be conservative on both sides, right?
Yes.
Did you have anything else that you wanted to point out? Or does the Board have any questions?
So which, if we have no questions, the leading will be to talk about refunding of our standing bonds.
Item 8, too.
Yeah.
So with this topic, Mr. Obafemi, I think it will be important for the public and as Bob Luz comes up, to really frame the position that the district, the Board has asked for us to take in terms of really rethinking our financial position. And everything we do is really to make sure that we are, we're moving towards greater transparency, but also really fiscal prudence and making sure that we are maximizing our investments. So, and where there are opportunities to save.
So I'm gonna set up Mr. Bob Luz, who is a municipal advisor for the district. And what Mr. Louis is going to talk about this evening is the refunding of one of our standing bonds. The bond was issued back in 2016. And the way bonds work is after 10 years, we have the ability to be able to refund it, which is similar to you refinancing your mortgage, really. And with that said, I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Louis. And with that said, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Lewis to walk us through the detailed process of the refunding opportunity.
Well, thank, pardon me. Thank you, everyone, for having me here tonight. And at any point during the presentation, please feel free to ask questions. So I'll go ahead and set up the conversation by looking at your overall bond and interest levy. Bond and interest is the principal and interest payments that you extend and collect from your taxpayers. So up here, you see a graph of those payments through the final maturity and levy year 2034. So that first year is 2024. That's the levy year for taxes collected right now to make payments due primarily on August 1st of this year and February 1st of next year. And then you see that you have two more years at that same amount of, it's roughly 36 to 37 million. I don't have the exact number. And then your payment declines, starting with levy year '27. For a $400,000 home, that payment decline represents about $356. So on this slide, we have a summary of the outstanding principal. And as was already mentioned in the setup to my presentation, the bonds are callable on February 1st of 2026. And when you issue your bonds, you designate them as being tax exempt, which means that your investors, to whom you pay interest, do not have to pay taxes on those interest payments. So they loan you the money at a below-market rate, essentially. So you're given an implicit subsidy by the federal government, which translates to, you know, 1%, give or take, depending on where you're at, a reduced yield expense. Well, because of that benefit, it comes with many rules that have to be followed. One of those rules that that is that any refinancing of that debt that is to be designated as tax exempt has to be no earlier than 90 days before the call date. So if your call day is February 1st of '26, you back up 90 days from there, you close on a refinancing bond no earlier than the beginning of November. It's usually like November 3rd or 4th, depending on whether that falls on a weekend or not. The amount of callable principal you have is 86.7 million on that series. So you'll notice in the table below, there are seven bond series that the district has remaining. I shared with the administration that this page many years ago used to be on two different pages. The district had many more bond issues at one time. So you're down to seven bond issues. And we've highlighted in yellow, the 2016 bonds. And those numbers in the yellow cells are the payments that are callable. And again, we like to talk about home mortgages oftentimes when we're talking to boards about refinancing your debt because that's what we're most familiar with in our own personal lives, is our home mortgage and our car payments. And home mortgages, the key difference is that call date. You know, home mortgage, you can refinance it anytime you want. Municipal bonds, you have to wait to get closer to that call date. And you notice that most of your bonds other than the series are non-callable. And that's because many of them are themselves refinancing bonds. And when they were issued, there was less than 10 years remaining until those bonds matured. And typically, if a bond has 10 years or less remaining, its destiny is non-callable for your investors. The interest rate on those callable maturities in yellow boxes is 5%. So right now, in today's market, we estimate that your, if you were refinancing today's market, your rate would be around a 4.1%. So you're lowering it almost a full 1% if market conditions hold where they are today. So this table here summarizes what you, we estimate the new bond payment would be. That's that first column of numbers. You have that one payment that's non-callable. You get to a total estimate for the new net debt service. Comparing it to the old debt service, that's what you currently have in place. Debt service, again, is principal and interest. Take the difference between those two columns. That's the estimated savings. The sum of that column is $5.6 million. That's going to be subject to change until the bonds would be sold, that the board chooses to proceed. The present value of that is 4.5. Maybe the call from your finance class is a dollar today. It's more than a dollar down the road. So because that 5.6 million is over a period of 10 years, putting it in today's dollars, it reduces that present value basis to 4.5%. Now, we look at the value of a refunding on a relative basis by taking that dollar amount, divide it by the principal amount that's being refunded. And that's right, just under 87 million. So when you divide 4.5 million by that, you come to 5.2%. That's a pretty decent savings percentage. It's higher than you got on your last refunding. So again, that's not a new interest rate. That's the relative savings as, relative to the size of the bond issue. Now, the rule of thumb in the public finance industry is to try to obtain at least a 2% threshold. So when you do the math, that comes up to roughly, let's call it 1.7 million at a minimum threshold. I would want to have at least 2 million. You know, the board can always, again, that's just an industry rule of thumb. There's nothing written in stone that it has to be that. The Board of Education determined by itself what it would like to see as a minimum of savings before authorizing a refinancing to occur.
That's a good point. And I think a big factor in that I invite Mr. Obafemi to speak to is the amount of work and payout we give in this situation, right? So do you want to add to that?
No, Dr. Cook, I think Bob pretty much covered this. I can shed light on.
We happened to.
I see a lot of conversation on the eyes there, so I want to make sure there's anything.
Because we're going to be asked what our, you know, what our threshold is for savings. And it sounds like the recommendation is about, it's going to be about 1.7 million.
Yes.
So we would want to save at least $1.7 million in order to proceed. And that's because there's costs involved. So it's, yeah.
Well, and there's opportunity costs, too, because it's like, okay, you get to there and you can only get $1 million. But what if we waited a little bit long? Can we get it back to 2 million? You know, so you want to, it's just like when you make a decision to sell some security in your own personal portfolio. When you get to the threshold you want, you take action. You probably be certain there's a date afterwards. Maybe you would have got more. There's days afterwards, you would have got less. It's more about obtaining what you set as your goal and making sure that when you take action, you're at least getting value for exercising your call option. You know, from the other refundings that we did in recent history were smaller, you know, in the neighborhood of, I think, 10 to 15 million. So the dollar amount was considerably smaller. You know, you're talking about a few hundred thousand dollars on those other refundings. But you would expect if, that's why we always divide it by the principal amount because you would expect on a relative basis, you should save a lot more money in absolute dollars refinancing an $86 million bond. So this shows them what your overall debt picture might look like if the refunding is similar to what was shown on the prior slide. And so the gray area in the background represents what your current payments are. So there'd be some savings in, you know, levy years '26, '27, '28. But what we worked to do is to smooth out the fluctuation from levy years '29 to '34, just so it's more of a level playing field in those years and you don't have another change like you do. Let me go back here, see how in levy years '29, '30, and '31, it's a little higher than it was in '32, '33, and '34. So just sort of smooths out that fluctuation in how you apply the savings. And that's one of the nice features of municipal bonds. Unlike a home mortgage, you refinance a home mortgage, every month goes down by the same amount. You know, you can't sort of tailor how you want to apply the savings. Municipal bonds, they can be structured in a way that achieves an overall objective when taken in tandem with your other outstanding bonds. So this is a possible timeline of key events. So we're making the presentation tonight. The board consider approval of the parameter resolution at either an August meeting or September meeting. What is a parameters resolution? So the night a Board of Education meets may not be the best day to sell bonds. It may be volatile that day. It could be an economic report that's being released. We always try to steer clear of the major economic reports whenever a bond issue is to be sold. And so we have the Boards of Education approve a parameters resolution that sets forth the maximum principal amount, the maximum repayment term. It's one of the points I forgot to mention. There's no extension of the term here. It's finishing in the same year that it already would be if the board were to proceed. So that would be one of the parameters. It can't be any later than what currently is set to schedule. The minimum savings threshold. And then it would designate two elected officials and two administrative officials to sign off on the sale. It's one, but while there's four people designated, you only need one elected, one administrative to sign off. That way, you're getting coverage for both levels. That way, you appoint two of each. That way, there's occasions or something to come up that you make sure that there's people around to sign off. So.
That's just at the end of, that's just at the end of that meeting that we approved it, correct? It's not, or is that upon sale?
It's upon sale. So it usually creates a window of time. So if the earliest we can sell would be late September, early October. So it'd probably be approval and you hope to sell within four to six weeks of that.
Oh.
There'd be continued updates to the board and administration. You know, as the market fluctuates, it's not like you're going to get to that week and sell it. Like, what was it? You're going to have some idea as you get closer to what the savings like it's doing based on market conditions. And the bonds would close in November, and then they would pay off the old bonds on the call date, February 1st. So there's that 90-day overlap. Normally, we don't like that 90-day overlap. But while they're sitting there in that 90 days, those proceeds are invested in U.S. Treasuries. And you'll actually invest it, be invested at a rate higher than the rate you borrow at. So you'll actually make some money during those 90 days. So it's actually advantageous to have that short escrow. Any other questions?
So one thing that I would like to point out that is important to notice that this will actually result in savings to taxpayers. We don't get any of the money. The savings now will go to taxpayers is what we paid in interest payment to bondholders. So that is very important. So the savings from the refinancing goes back to us, our taxpayer. We're responsible for making the payment anyway. We don't get any of the money. What we're doing is, it's an interest rate play. We will pay the higher rate, which is what we owe when we issue the bonds originally. But since interest rate is going to be lower, we're hoping when we send, it will be a savings to our taxpayer.
Well, I always just like to remind the public that basically about 20% and 25% of your, the school portion of your tax bill is to pay back these bonds.
Yeah.
And so that, that part can only go to payback bonds. So that part will be smaller as a result of this. So that's kind of the, you know, just the way I like to think about it.
Thank you. And the other thing I want to point out, sir, is that I think Bob mentioned that initially, we started out with 250 million dollars in outstanding bonds, and we paid that down substantially to a lower amount. So I just, I just want that to be known, that we have been paying that. And that's what accounts for that bond and interest portion of the tax bill that you get twice a year.
Yeah. And the reason why the payments are still about the same is because over the years, we've flattened it out because there would be one year through the roof. All of a sudden, your tax bill would go up $1,000, go down $600, go up another 1,500. Remember those, those early years? So that's, this has been a long process and to try to help the taxpayers out as much as possible with this. Does anybody have any questions? I have one.
I have one. Is there any negative to the refinance? I mean, everything you've said has been a positive. There's nothing lurking in the darkness about. I mean, I guess the one problem would be if interest rates suddenly spiked and we're refinancing them above the 5% that they're at now.
Right. But then you wouldn't, you wouldn't proceed. You know, you have.
Oh, so you could say no.
Yeah. Yeah. This is, that's where you set the minimum threshold of 1.7 million. If that can't be achieved, then it wouldn't proceed. I would hope that it would be, you know, something close to what you're seeing tonight. Although there's some time between now and then, the, you know, a lot of the uncertainty that we face this year in the market is starting to lessen. You know, the big, the big surprise or shock to the markets was on April 2nd, when the tariffs were announced. We're starting to see announcement, you know, that decision was pushed to August 1st. We heard the big announcement of the weekend that they've come to an agreement with the EU, which has a block as our biggest trading partner. You know, so a lot of those things are hopefully eliminating the risk that rates could be higher when you get to late September, early October. Because you're only talking, you know, August, September, two months of additional market risk, if you will.
Does the Fed's decision on interest rates have any impact on the bond interest rates?
Yes, it does. But markets anticipate what Fed policy would be. They don't wait for it to actually happen. So like, for example, the markets, there's only like a 3% chance in the market's perspective that the Fed cuts rates on Wednesday. The markets worked in the expectation of four rate cuts over the next year or so. So that's already baked into the market. What could cause it to change is a change in those expectations. You know, the markets don't wait for the things to actually happen.
Paul can say something and change it all, right? But so, does anybody else have any questions right now? When do we lock in the rate? Like, what's the earliest we can lock in that rate?
It would be late September.
Late September?
Yeah, because you have to be within about five weeks of your closing date for it to not be considered a forward-delivery bond. And a forward-delivery bond has more complications and a higher interest rate. So it doesn't seem prudent to go through the whole process to create a forward-delivery bond when you're only talking about being less than, I mean, by the time the board passes a resolution, it's late August. You're talking about one month and you can sell it.
Okay. The sooner we can lock it in.
Yeah.
If the savings are there, that's why.
Which, to answer Erica's question directly, we've had a couple of refinances as I've been in the district. And what we've always, we've always had runners. The last one that we refunded, we waited because the parameter of the minimum savings that we needed wasn't there. So we waited, and when it was favorable, we went ahead and did that. And we realized the savings that we need to be able to do that. So we wouldn't do anything if we don't, we don't hit that minimum savings threshold.
Thank you. Nobody? All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for having me here tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Water billing repayment agreements.
Okay. Rafael and water bill repayment.
So.
You again.
We found out late last year that there was an error with the billing for water charges that drew off our building. OE and OH. And there were two components to the billing error. One was from the village of Oswego, and the other one is from Fox Metro. And the amount is listed, the amount for the one, for the village is listed in the memo. And once we found out about it, it's kind of like when you go to a bank and you bank in a bank, one of those things that you sign up. It's that if they made an error in your favor, when they find out, you got to pay the money back. It's not a windfall. The same thing goes when, for example, Niko underbills you, and then they find out that they've underbilled you for so many months. By, you know, by the agreement you signed, you have to pay it back. So it's very similar here. So what we've been doing is we've been negotiating with the village since we have a much better relationship in the last couple of years than we've had before to try to reach an agreement that will be, that will make it easy for us to be able to pay the money back. So we propose having the payment stretched out over 10 years as opposed to being paid right away, which they actually have the right to demand that. So we did it over 10 years. And if you can see the payment schedule that is included in the board package, you see that it's a reasonable amount. I believe it's about 2,800 for OE every year and about 1,800 for which. We think we can, we can manage that as opposed to trying to pay everything all at once. We're still in conversation with Fox Metro to try to reach an agreement which is similar comparable. And they're working with their board to provide the, they say so, the go-ahead for them to be able to reach an agreement with us. So as soon as we can get to that, we'll bring that to the board for approval.
Any questions?
Is there any interest on this payment schedule? No?
It's no interest.
Sweet.
And we appreciate, we really appreciate the cooperation of the village and their willingness to work with us. As what the relationships developed, there's a recognition that we serve the same masters, if you will, the same community network.
I just have a, just a clarification. And it was probably just a misspeaking.
And it was probably just a mis speaking. You said every year. It looks like it's every, that payment is every other month. Is that right? The 2,800 and 1,600?
Yes. The, the payment schedule, I'm sorry. The payment schedule that we agreed to. So to make it manageable, that's, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm good.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Action item 9.1. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion to authorize the payment of bills in the amount of $8,553,322.50 as presented.
Second. Dr. Murillo?
Aye.
Ms. Winmouth?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. C?
Aye.
Dr. Pollock?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Action item 9.2. Resolution authorizing a developer to submit initial development plans to the village of Oswego to undertake the village concept review process related to the potential development of the Old Trauber property. Can I have a motion, please?
What you said. I make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing a developer to submit initial development plans to the village of Oswego to undertake the village concept review process related to the potential development of the Old Trauber property.
Okay. I'm sorry. Somebody second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to clarify that this.
Can you pull your mic a little closer?
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. So I just want to clarify that this is specifically just to authorize those initial development conversations. And at any point, we as a board, if we deem this not beneficial to the community, to the district, then we can pull out of that decision.
It's a great question. I'm going to invite the board's attorney to speak directly to this, who's reviewed this.
Hi, everyone. Yes, that's absolutely correct. So this is a multi, multi-tiered process. This is the very first resolution and all you're really doing here is saying as the owner of this property, that you consent to these potential developers to start the process with the village. The village, I emphasized this in our last meeting, the village has two steps in their zoning process. This is the initial one where they're gonna look at this and give their initial thoughts on the project. If their initial thoughts are positive and the school board is still positive about that, you will then pass likely a second resolution for them to go forth with the more expensive and for them in-depth process of the zoning process. A third act, though, that you'll have to take is to enter into an agreement with the village to convey the property. But we are several steps and months away from that. This is only the very initial process for developer to begin their process with the village.
Thank you.
And my understanding, the village process includes several opportunities for the public to, to get feedback from the public, to give comments and considerations and things like that.
Yes. Yes. So under, so in the second process and the more formal zoning process, they are legally required to have public hearings. I believe that in this initial process, there will also be an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the village about their concerns, thoughts about the development.
Yeah. It appeared it's going through a concept review at planning and zoning. Going, you go to the village. Then if that concept is, if there is, you know, desire to go forward from there, then they are going to have another planning and zoning and then another, you know, village. And then we would be involved throughout that. You know, I read here in the agreement, the board is no way obligated to approve, to approve such second resolution to convey the property to the village or the developer if the board determines such conveyance is not in best interest. So if we get new information with the mass facilities plan, if there's anything, there is definitely possibilities there. Did anybody else?
Is it, is it appropriate to go off the decision-making process of it's our duty to decide if conveying this property to the village is in the school district's best interest, not the end result of what the property becomes, has nothing to do with in the purview of the school district?
Yes. That is correct.
Could you clarify? You said yes? I'm sorry.
So your, your job as the school board is to make a determination if convey, if you no longer need this property and if it's in your best interest to sell it. As far as the development goes and the development process, that is the village's decision as far as making zoning approvals.
So when, if it comes to the point where the village has decided they want to do this project this way and we disagree with it as school board members, it's not our position that we should be voting on the eventual outcome. It's more of should we be disposing of the property?
That's within your, before you sell the property, that's within your discretion as a board member.
Okay.
Yeah. I would say that that could come into our, our thought process. So we're not limited.
No, you, you are not obligated to approve this. And you're not, down the road, you are not obligated to approve a future agreement with the village if the village happens to like this project, but we feel it's not in the best interest, our, in our best interest to convey it.
Now, I will say that the village are the definite experts at development relative to us. I mean, so we're not, you know, it, it sounds like you have something to say.
I mean, you're right on on that. We're not in the property development business. Our competency, our expertise is the education of children. We just happen to have a property that we've had now for a while that's just sitting there. We, we, we no longer need and based on the, the enrollment projection that we have and the current program need, we no longer participate needing that building. And to continue to spend limited resources that we have, just didn't seem like from a financial and operational point of view. It's.
And the, the village has all those processes ready, you know, and established. They work pretty well. I mean, there's a lot of people that are on the planning and zoning. There's obviously elected officials, a lot of administrators, a lot of expertise from the community as well as the administration. So. Any?
One more?
Yeah. No, no. This is the first time we're seeing this resolution, so I.
Well, so I just want to kind of piggyback off what you said and kind of just give a minute to expand on it a bit. Either, I don't know if this is Mr. Obafemi or Dr. Calgati, but can you just speak to a minute, for a minute? Like as a district, how this decision at this point in the process would align with our strategic plan and our long-term facilities plan as a district?
So the buildings that we have right now are the buildings that we're using for programs and for education programs. And we, we looked at that based on program design as well as enrollment projection now and at least five, 10 years into the future. And we never, there's nothing, based on the data that we have, that would suggest that we would need to use that building. We haven't used it for educational reasons for at least eight years. And as we do our master facility planning, our concern is to make sure that the building that we have, that we need, that we need for programming, that we, we do the capital repair to get them into an optimum space for educational use as well as health and wellbeing of our student as well as our staff members. So if we were to divert from that, as it stands right now, we have limited resources to do capital projects for the building that we occupy, that we're using every day for instructional and program need. So to divert from that, to start contemplating spending money on a building that we haven't used in over years, it just seems imprudent because we don't have enough resources to address the buildings that we use every day. Just then say, it's very limited resources that we don't even have to be able to maintain a building to start talking about. Then diverting that little bit of resources to a building we haven't used over the last eight years did not seem like a good idea.
Dr. Kincaid, can you speak a little bit? He talks about the demographic study. You were just recently meeting with our long-range facility planning group, the White Group and RSP, who's our district demographer, about some of the projections of where we're seeing.
As we discussed last year, our enrollment has been just shifting within the district. Our graduating classes are decreasing. We've been graduating about 1,500 students, but our incoming classes have been anywhere between 1,050 and 1,150. So we've been just naturally losing about 400 students a year. But the enrollment projections from RSP is actually balanced out. So even though we do have some new growth, we're not seeing a significant increase in overall student population. What we're seeing is a shift around the district and that's something that will be, as we talked last year, we're focusing on our special education and multilingual programs for this fall. And then for next fall, so fall of '26, we'll be talking and really focusing on that new growth and potential student assignment along that Wolf's Cross, Wolf's Crossing corridor.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think what I was going to say was just another iteration of what Dr. Martin essentially asked. I did have an opportunity to walk Old Trauber and just some of my concerns was the fact that it was just simply unsafe and it was hazardous, right? And so we would have to get that building to standard at the very least. And as it stands right now, from what I can recall from our long-term facilities plan, we don't necessarily have any buildings that's hazardous. And so my question would be like, how would this impede like that long-term facility plan? But I think that you essentially answered that and we would essentially have to do a detour and put all of our resources in this space as it is extremely hazardous, just walking the building. As a matter of fact, I felt a bit unsafe and wanted to get out after a while, so.
Yeah. I think that the mass facility plan, it's a phase one, indicated about $200 million, $212 million in necessary repairs. A lot of that having to do with the fact that we've built so many buildings at the same time and now all of the bills are coming due at the same time.
So to talk, to talk to Pollock's point, if I, if I may. The, the problem with a building that has been sitting there for eight years without use, if we were to contemplate doing something about it, remember all our other buildings have been used every day. We'll have to hire an architect to actually look at it. We have to hire a structural engineer to see what kind of structural needs, deficiency are there for buildings that are sat vacant for, for at least eight years. Then we have to look at environmental study to see what kind of things that we used to build buildings back there that we would not ever use now. And those things cost money. Then we also have to budget to say, if we were going to do the remediation, how much is it gonna cost? And what I think is clear is it would be substantially more than what it would do to fix a building that we use every day that we've been upgrading all along.
I, I think complimentary, and I would invite folks who are listening to join our budget committee meetings that are coming up around the, both the financial profile of the district that, that really I would say while we have worked very hard to position the district in terms of its transparency, we submitted this past year for the first time our annual financial audit in the timely manner, the way in which the, is required. And so there are many things that we have shifted. Regardless, there are still significant challenges that are facing us from a financial position. And so Mr. Obafemi and his team and all of our teams across the district have been working very hard to ensure that we're moving to transparency and coordination of our services. You've heard board many times about the, the different savings we are looking to achieve through RFPs and through various purchase services and changing those. So I would just invite the community, if you're listening, to really attend those meetings, to hear and to learn about the, just the significant improvements that we've done to make sure that we are saving every single, using every single dollar as wisely as possible, but also how this is an opportunity to shift this. The last thing I would just add is that in the community, there's been a couple of questions. People have approached me around community cares, which food, food. The food pantry there is really an important part of our district's commitment to service. So number one, that is actually housing a part of the building where initially the district had been moving to, to secure and to potentially remediate, but then found to be cost prohibitive, right? So it was important, but it's still in a position where they can actually do some things out of there. But the majority of the building is really not inhabitable, to be honest with you. And so, but I would say is that we're very much in contact with the food pantry. In fact, the district invests through its Department of Equity Engagement, I'm sorry, our former Department of Equity Engagement, but we have an Assistant Director of Engagement who continues to invest deeply in our work and, and, and the food pantry. And it's a very important part of our initiative. So we are deeply committed to ensuring that it continues to serve and there is no plan to change any of its services this coming fall. And whatever plans might come, they are part of our community and we're not going to in any way sacrifice or put that at risk. So I just want to be very clear and public about that. It is a part of our, our thinking and our plans and we have time and we will be prepared to support our families in need this coming fall for what they need.
I do have a question, going back to the Trauber building. Given how long it's been vacant and obviously being a new board member, how hypothetically have we even taken the opportunity to see how much it would be to do an architect and so forth on? And if we could revitalize the building, have we looked at that opportunity to see the cost? And then my second question to that, have we connected with the community? Cause I would believe that there would be resources financially to support. Should there be something that the community agrees to for our kids?
So we, and as I mentioned earlier, we have financially, as it relates to capital projects, we are very strapped financially to be able to, to be able to even maintain the buildings that we have. We have about 23 buildings that we use every day for instruction for our kids as well as for educators. And the majority of those buildings were built at the same time. They're showing their age now. RTU, which is the cooling system, needs to be replaced. HVAC system needs to be replaced. We have a building automation system. So with the limited resources that we have or capital project, what we've been focused on is trying to get the buildings that we use every single day going. That's what we've been focused on. We haven't had the luxury of, of, of looking at using that limited resources to, to figure out how we fix a building that we haven't used in eight years that we're not using now. So in making the decision, the opportunity cost of making the decision as to where to invest limited resources on a building that we haven't used in eight years or on buildings that we use every day that needs TLC. We've just focused that limited resources on making sure that the buildings we need every day gets the repairs that it needs to make them habitable.
Can I just add? I, when they, a long time ago, we tried to sell it and a church wanted to buy it and they were gonna do the work and they found out if they did any renovation, they would have to redo the fire systems, the sprinklers. There's probably ADA compliance things that would have to be upgraded. I would guess it's in the millions to get it functional, to be inhabited. And that's without opening all the walls and configuring it like you would. I, I just.
There was, I can't remember which project it was, but it was, it would, it ended up being cost prohibitive for an outside company. I can't remember. You probably remember.
Resurrection Church?
Yeah. It was the church that won.
Yeah. Resurrection Church, I believe it was, through Kluber.
Yeah. And that was just to make it safe, you know? That wasn't, and so, and as far as the community aspect part, a lot of what the community wants and we have dug up through the, kind of through the strategic planning as well as the mass facility. And then there's further opportunities for that as well. I don't know if, if, I don't elaborate, there's more, kind of, what did we call it? The mass facility.
The steering.
Steering committee.
Yeah. The feedback.
So that's another opportunity. So there's still opportunities for people to, and that's really, that's literally the whole point. It's to see what the community expects from its facilities. So yes, it is.
So the long-range facility plan is a pro, is a process by which the community will have an opportunity to weigh in on if you had 100 have an opportunity to weigh in on if you had $100, where would you put your $100 in terms of spending to fix things, right? So do you want the, the, the building of Boulder Hill fixed? Do you want to invest it all in this property over here? There are essentially the development of an understanding around after doing the full review of all the needs of our facilities, and then on top of that, here are some additional things we want to do with our, with what's coming our way in terms of financial possibilities. Here's what we want to consider in terms of building or in terms of repair. Now, what I would say is, and so we're going to have public notice, and we'll invite the community, we'll invite our schools to be a part of, to your question, about community engagement, which is why the Board's attorney really laid out that tonight is really, this RFP came out of a desire, there were community members who were extremely interested in using this property, and so what we identified as a more fair, public way to ensure that everybody had access to this opportunity to make it, to do an RFP, and invite the community to participate in this RFP process. Anybody was welcome to do so. And so what I would say is that, that, that was one aspect of identifying usage for this property. What is very clear is that there are emerging lots of structural needs, but also hopeful needs in terms of things that we want to improve, our turf fields, the way in which our athletics programs are, the collaborative spaces in our classrooms, all of those need to be considered, as well as life safety issues. And so that is still going to be part of our plan. None of what the Board takes a vote on tonight in terms of the resolution impacts that plan, nor does it take away from any opportunity the Board has to say, these two need to come together, right? So if the, if the Board said, you know what, we need to move in a different direction, that's still a possibility. Tonight just says, as part of the RFP process, we want to make sure that we're working with village partners. Brian, did you want to clarify anything, or I think, okay, okay?
And can I just make one, one last comment, because the community, at least at this point in time, is referring back to the prior, to the prior offer that was a few months ago. I think the different, there are several differences, but I think the main difference people forget is that this will not cause, this will relieve the school district of, of a burden as opposed to the other project which would require an investment from the school district of several million dollars that we really don't have. So I just, I just want to bring that up. You know, we would like to make all these improvements, but as Mr. Obafemi keeps saying, our funds are, our funds are very limited, so there's a, there's a huge difference between these two.
Well, yeah, not only, not only that, but there's also projected revenue. On the, the, the idea is, is that we wouldn't get that immediately, we wouldn't have to wait until the, the end of the TIF, so.
But that's not a guarantee, though, right?
That's something that we can, that's something that we can demand, yeah. In our, am I, am I right? That's something that we would work out in the final agreements.
Right, I mean, where we are going to end up is ending up to, with a real estate agreement with the village, which will contemplate compensation for the school district.
Yeah, that's kind of one of the big.
Right, and the, the resolution contemplates that if you don't reach that with the village, you can back out. And this is all conditioned on the school board being confident that we have a, we have sufficient financial terms related to the conveyance of the property.
And the, the, those are some important things that we need to talk about, because as it stands right now, we spend money to keep the building, we haven't used the building in at least eight years. Now, if we, the, the deal we're contemplating, there are no guarantees that it will go through, but at least we're taking steps at doing something that has the potential of yielding revenue for the district. So since the property is located in a TIF district, what that does is, and the village also confirmed when they were here, that the property was designated in TIF district in order to help the district when the time comes to do development in the district in the, with the property. The benefit of having a TIF is that their, their incremental funds that can be applied to was a project development, and during the time when the TIF is in place too, their revenue sharing agreement that we can negotiate with the village whereby we get residual revenue as the property is developed and goes on the tax roll. That's, that's one thing. And we also talk about the possibility of revenue that accrues from the development itself. One set of revenue will be the increment that will come from property development, the other set of revenue will be the revenue that comes from the development of the property itself. So we're looking at a potential for two sets of revenue, for something that currently serves as a financial drain on the district. So the first year is projected to be $700,000 in, in tax increment, and that grows as the value of that property go, grows. And when that TIF sunsets, which should be in about 2039 to 2040, all that growth then goes back on the tax roll, and what it does is it lessens the burden on the, the community members who are paying all the taxes in this community, because you're talking about additional $700,000, and after about 13 or 14 years of that TIF sunsetting, it will be a substantial increase in the value of the property if this project goes through, that will, and we all know, the more that is paid for commercial development, then there will be less that we will have to contribute, all things being equal, from residential property owners to property bill, for the tax bill, and as it stands right now, 80% of our tax base comes from residential property, homeowners. So the more we can have property, commercial property development in our tax base makes the less burden it will be on, on homeowners, contribution to the property to our tax base.
So you, you, you're saying commercial, so in this context, is it because it's rental?
It will, any, any property that is multi-unit is considered for, for assessment purpose as a commercial property.
Okay.
And also, since it derives income, as opposed to the developer living there, is considered commercial. So be whatever the, the, the property generates in revenue is what is used to determine the, the assessed value of the property.
Well, that was great discussion. Is there any, any further? Okay.
Ms. C?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Dr. Mario?
Aye.
Dr. Polak?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Wenmuth?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
I abstain.
Motion passes six ayes and one abstention. Okay. Moving to action item 9.3, approval of copier machines and maintenance services vendor. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve and award the copier machines and maintenance services to Rico for a 16-month term.
Second.
Any discussion?
Dr. Polak?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Wenmuth?
Aye.
Dr. Mario?
Aye.
Ms. C?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item 9.4, approval of 2025-26 facility rentals and student fees. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the 2025-26 facility rentals and student fees as discussed and presented.
Second.
Ms. Wenmuth?
Aye.
Ms. C?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Dr. Polak?
Aye.
Dr. Mario?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item 9.5, approval of intergovernmental agreement with Oswego Fire Department. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Oswego Fire Department as discussed and presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. C?
Aye.
Dr. Mario?
Aye.
Ms. Wenmuth?
Aye.
Dr. Polak?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item 9.6, approval of board protocols. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the board protocols as discussed and presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Wenmuth?
Aye.
Ms. C?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Dr. Mario?
Aye.
Dr. Polak?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item 9.7, approval of English four perspective novel. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve Celito as an additional text choice to the English four perspectives course.
Second.
Any discussion?
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Wenmuth?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Dr. Polak?
Aye.
Ms. C?
Aye.
Dr. Mario?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item 9.8, approval of resolution authorizing notice of dismissal of educational support, staff employee number one. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing notice of dismissal to educational support staff employer Michael Hochschild.
Second.
Any discussion? Good.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. C?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Wenmuth?
Aye.
Dr. Mario?
Aye.
Dr. Polak?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item 9.9, approval of resolution authorizing notice of dismissal of educational support, staff employee number two. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing notice of dismissal to educational support staff employee Christopher Casper.
Second.
Any discussion?
Dr. Mario?
Aye.
Ms. Wenmuth?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Dr. Polak?
Aye.
Ms. C?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item 9.10, approval of personnel report. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the personnel report as discussed and presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Dr. Polak?
Aye.
Ms. C?
Aye.
Ms. Wenmuth?
Aye.
Dr. Mario?
Aye.
Motion, motion passes seven zero. Action, or item 10.1, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion.